Hello, before we proceed, I'd like to turn over the meeting to one of the, one of three students who will receive the President's Award tonight. Please welcome to the dais Scottsdale Elementary School Student Lea Corral.[355.26][355.26][applause]
Nice to meet you. Hello. Yes. Come on here. Lea, how are you? Nice to meet you.
That's okay. Relax, relax. You wanna sit down or you want?
Oh, no, that's okay. Thank you and good evening. My name is Lea Corral and I am the Student Council President at Scottsdale Elementary School. It is my honor to call this meeting to order. Thank you.[393.44][393.44][applause]
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, Lea, for starting off this meeting tonight. Good evening and welcome to Isleta Independent School District's Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board Trustees is a meeting of the Board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided by ISD Policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens' input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the Board may listen but may not enter into discussion on any matters in citizens' input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting, often attended by students, and ask that we conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values, traditions of Isleta Independent School District. This meeting where the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:03 PM, we have a quorum with Shane Hagerty, Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Mike Dwyer, Connie Woodruff, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Catherine Lucero is unable to join us at this time and is considered excused. Trustee Hernandez, please introduce the JROTC.
Good evening. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledge of allegiance, and then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Isleta High School. The color guard commander is Cadet First Lieutenant Damian Renteria. The other color guard members are Cadet Major Dylan Minos, Cadet Dylan Betron, and Cadet Dylan Holiden. The pledge leader is Cadet Colonel Adeseli Manzera. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance, and a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Yes, sir. Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the Board, esteemed guests, welcome. I invite our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Mrs. M. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have three recognitions this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais. All those members, please remain seated until our recognitions are concluded. Thank you. Our first recognition honors the Scottsdale Elementary School Student Council, which has consistently demonstrated exceptional and innovative service to others through its approach to community involvement. The Student Council's commitment to supporting the Eastwood/Isleta ISD and El Paso community began this year by partnering with the El Pasoans Fighting Hunger Food Bank to collect more than 1,200 cans of food for families in need. They continued their efforts with a Relay for Life fundraiser to fight cancer, which collected more than $300 in donations. And most recently, the group also collected over 1,000 pairs of socks for the El Paso Homeless Shelter during the holiday season. These outstanding acts of service showcase the Student Council's dedication to getting back to our community, and we are proud to recognize their efforts with the February 2025 President's Award. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome representatives from the Scottsdale Elementary School Student Council, beginning with Lea Corral, President.[826.26][826.26][applause] Liliana Echavarria, Vice President. And Lola Savala, Secretary.[842.40][842.40][applause] They are accompanied by sponsors Ivan Hutter and Sandra Garcia.[851.76][851.76][applause] And Principal Juan Guzman. Let's hear it for the cadets.[896.02][896.02][applause] Our next recognition honors high school students who won a coveted spot on this year's All-State Dance Team by the Texas Dance Educators Association. At their convention experience last month, all-state dancers participated in dance workshops, leadership training, master classes, and networking with other students, culminating in a stellar performance led by master choreographer Terrell Mitchell. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me welcome this year's All-State Dance Team members, beginning with Beller High School Student Luciana Armenta.[931.96][931.96][applause] She is accompanied by teacher Susan Salazad.[940.84][940.84][applause]
From Del Valle High School, please welcome Sylvia Olivas Chavez.[986.28][986.28][applause] She is accompanied by teacher Azucena Garcia and Principal Valerie Hairston.[996.84][996.84][applause] Let's hear it for the Conquistadores.[1023.44][1023.44][applause] From Eastwood High School, we have Isabella Reyes.[1032.56][1032.56][applause] Congratulations to the Troopers.[1074.82][1074.82][applause] Next, let's welcome Hanks High School dancer Giselle de la Riva.[1082.68][1082.68][applause] She is accompanied by teacher Crystal Nance and Principal Daniel Gutierrez.[1092.52][1092.52][applause] Let's hear it for the Knights.[1117.83][1117.83][applause] From Parkland High School, please welcome Anahic Ochoa.[1127.44][1127.44][applause] Congratulations to the Matadors.[1166.94][1166.94][applause] From Riverside High School, please welcome Jayden Vega.[1174.85][1174.85][applause] Let's give a big round of applause for the Rangers.[1218.52][1218.52][applause] Next, from the Young Women's Leadership Academy, we have Zoe Avila.[1228.72][1228.72][applause] Let's hear it for the Transformers.[1273.94][1273.94][applause] And our final outstanding dancer this evening comes from Isleta High School. Please welcome Selena Lopez.[1285.38][1285.38][applause] Congratulations to the Indians.[1326.88][1326.88][applause] This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
I see you're still eating the cookie jar.[1364.34][1364.34][laughter]
Ms. Mathiessen, do we have citizens' input this evening?
Yes, President. Yes, President.
Testing. Yes, President, after all we do, we have two. The first one is Laura Linghi, advocate for school psychologist pay raise. And that's Linghi, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. President, esteemed Board members of YISD and Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. My name is Laura Linghi, and I have been a school psychologist with YISD for 19 years. What keeps me here is the people and the students that I work with. School psychologists as a group, I am one of seven currently, are very passionate about supporting students with mental health needs and identifying students with emotional disabilities or possible autism spectrum disorder. We also support schools, campuses, administrators, parents with behavior intervention strategies and mental health resources in the community. Our national organization, the National Association of School Psychologists, currently recommends a ratio of one school psychologist of 500 students. At this point, the ratio is one to 1,200 students. There is a lack of qualified school psychologists. Right now, we are operating short one school psychologist, and I'm sorry to say that we will be losing another one in March, so I will be one of six. The needs are great, the workers are few, and we are currently covering one area which has a vacancy and soon to have two vacant areas without a school psychologist to manage them. Unmanageable caseloads have become evident for school psychologists. We are currently at an average of about 80 cases per school psychologist. As you know, the mental health needs are very great and very much at the forefront of what we are facing today. Employment of school psychologists is projected to grow by 11% from the year 2020 to 2030. Currently, our spread population of YISD is above the national average. We are at 17.25%, and that is 5,823 students. It's been an average of an increase of 125 evaluations per year, 995 of those which are for autism, and 387 of those for emotional disturbance. I am respectfully requesting increased compensation for the remaining school psychologists. It has been challenging for us to fill vacant positions because our salary is not competitive in comparison to the other districts that we have researched in the region. I thankfully appreciate your kind consideration of this request.
Good evening, President Ochoa, esteemed members of the Board, and Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. My name is Rosie Perez, and I proudly represent the members of West Texas Alliance. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak today. I stand before you in continued support of the proposed year-round school calendar for the district. As we look toward improving the quality of education in our schools, it is essential that we continue implementing innovative solutions to meet the evolving needs of our students. The traditional school calendar had long been the standard, but it is not necessarily the most effective in promoting continuous learning and growth. Continuing with a year-round calendar offers a solution that benefits students, educators, and the community as a whole. First, the year-round calendar has significantly reduced the impact of summer learning loss. Research consistently shows that students experience a regression in academic skills over the long summer break. For many students, especially those from lower-income backgrounds, the summer months present a challenge. They often lack access to enriching educational experiences, and this gap only widens as time passes. With start testing occurring earlier in the spring semester, continuing to adopt a year-round calendar would provide more consistent learning opportunities to students. With shorter breaks between terms, students can maintain momentum and build on the skills they've adopted, ensuring better retention and deeper understanding of their subjects. Second, this calendar promotes more balanced use of instructional time. A year-round schedule breaks up the long summer vacation into shorter, more frequent breaks, offering a better balance between learning and rest. This allows This allows students to recharge and come back to school refreshed rather than losing motivation over the course of an extended break. Research indicates the more evenly spaced breaks contribute to higher student engagement and productivity when school is in session. Third, this schedule can benefit our teachers and staff as well. By avoiding burnout from a long, unbroken school year, educators will be able to focus on more efficient and effective teaching. The shorter breaks allow teachers to evaluate and adjust their teaching methods more frequently, making their instruction even more impactful. Additionally, the year-round schedule can help teachers better maintain work-life balance, ensuring they can perform at their best for our students. In conclusion, the year-round calendar is not just about a different schedule. It's about creating a learning environment that supports continuous growth, reduces learning gaps, and nurtures both students and teachers. This is a step toward an education system that adapts to the needs of our community and prepares students for success, no matter their background. I urge the Board of Trustees to approve the instructional school calendar as presented by administration. Our students deserve the best possible education, and this is one powerful way we can help them achieve their fullest potential. I'd like to take a brief moment to address the rumor that's been circulating that our organization is no longer welcome or working in the district. While I can't say that we've been tapped to lead a top-secret mission to the moon, we certainly do know how to navigate the complexities of a school district. And I can assure you that we are still very much here, fully engaged, and committed as ever to work for the work that we're doing in the district. Rest assured, we're not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you all. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, sir. President Ochoa, members of the Board, we have two presentations and then our monthly presentation from our internal auditor, Ms. Amy Sanchez. We'll start with a new and exciting program that relies on VR, virtual reality, to promote both mathematics and science in the district, our Prisms program. And I'll allow Dr. Brenda Chacon to make the introductions.
Good evening, Mr. Ochoa, Dr. De La Torre, members of the Board. We are pleased to come back. If you recall, maybe about a year and a half ago, we presented on Prisms, and we introduced you to what Prisms does and the investment that we were making to continue being innovative in the areas of math and science. So today, we wanted to present with you the impact, how's it's going. And we also have a wonderful Isleta Middle School here to represent and talk about their perspectives from teachers and students. I think the students are running a little late, but I'm sure the teachers can cover their perspective. So let me just give you an overview, just to remind you. And exactly what you see in the little video there is what students see. It's a virtual reality, the VR sets, just like Dr. De La Torre said. And it offers an opportunity to connect to math and science concepts through multisensory experiences, mirroring how we naturally understand the world. And so it presents different scenarios for different TEACs in the program. So this is our second year of full implementation. All middle schools, high schools, Valle Verde, and Wyla have Prisms. We serve Algebra I, Biology, 7th grade math, and other math subjects such as Geometry and Algebra II. And in addition, our academic team has aligned the program with our scope and sequence to make it easier for our teachers when they're planning to remember that there's Prisms modules available for certain TEACs. The data, because I know this is important, we want to make sure that we get our return in investment. So the Prisms, if you remember, doesn't cover your full math curriculum or a full science curriculum. It's certain TEACs that it covers. And so with those student expectations, what we've done is we've compared the performance on checkpoints that was compared to before and after, kind of a before we had Prisms to after. And those particular student expectations, data from previous school year, we included differences in the difficulty of each SE, and we show improvement. So we're very happy to see that for those TEACs that it does cover, we have seen improvement. So you can see the improvement for 7th grade math, Algebra I, and the differences there for Biology as well. So we are happy to see that we do see an impact in the data with the SEs that it does cover across our schools. And before I hand it over to the Isleta Middle School teachers, if you have any questions for me or you want to wait till the very end to kind of hear the teachers, they are 7th grade math teachers, Ms. Duarte and Ms. Nahera. The modules that they're going to be talking about are the probability and ratios, and hopefully the students will get here. But if not, I am going to hand it over and let them give you an overview on their perspective on how's it going, challenges, lessons learned, and how we can continue improving math instruction at Isleta Middle School and across our schools. So with further ado, I'm going to introduce the ladies. Come on up. They also have their instructional coach, their mass instructional coach, Ms. Lado, here with them too. So I will hand it over to them.
Good evening, board members, as well as Dr. De La Torre. We're honored to be here tonight. So Prisms is something that was introduced to us last year, and it's been an exciting adventure. Of course, with new adventures comes new challenges for us to tackle, but in doing that, we have grown a lot, so thank you. So our process with Prisms starts really in PLC, where we look at our calendar and we look to see how can we incorporate those Prisms activities for our students and really utilize that experience for a new generation who's very technological-inclined to really enhance their learning experience and tie that into our learning for our students. And so I'm going to pass it over to my 7th grade math team, who do an amazing job really tying that connection between tier-one instruction and that Prisms experience so that they get the best overall learning in these modules.
Good evening. I'm Ms. Duarte. I think as teachers in general, especially with math, we struggle to find ways to get our kids to experience that real-life scenarios, and it's hard to incorporate that with math. And so with Prisms, it allows them to experience different scenarios. And so as teachers, we're able to kind of pull from that. And I was able to kind of compare it. My first year of teaching, we didn't have Prisms. And so obviously, those real-life scenarios are kind of having to be built within us. And so using Prisms my second year and this year, it's really nice because we have those to kind of lean on. And so, for example, we just finished the probability module. And so, like she mentioned, we start off with them kind of learning and experiencing it themselves, and then we kind of anchor it down, coming out of it. So we'll build our anchor charts, and that anchor chart's just built off information they're telling us. And so it's really neat to kind of see that they are learning from these experiences, and they are grasping information. And then we kind of build from there. We build the rigor because obviously, we need to get them to, you know, a higher level. And so we build from there, but I think, as a teacher, I think it's just really neat to see them being able to experience. Like, the probability had to do with weather, and the ratios ones... The ratio one had to do with like a satellite. And so it's a lot of things that these kids don't get to see outside of it. And I guess with going with that, you know, some of these kids won't ever get the opportunity to put these headsets on. And so it's really neat to see them, you know, have fun with it, and they're learning at the same time because they may not get these experiences outside of our classroom. And I will say, you know, we, like they had mentioned, we don't get to see these modules through every TEAC that we have, but the ones that we do get to implement them with, we do see, I guess, like a benefit from it. They are able to kind of, we refer back to it constantly. They grasp it a little bit better. And so I think that's all I have to say. I don't know if you all have any questions. Do you want to say?
Hi, good evening. My name is Aralina Ahira. And just to piggyback off of my partner here, based on my experience in the classroom, I think Prisms is a very good tool that we implemented in the classroom. I love that the kids are engaged and are able to experience different things that we are not used to seeing here in the city. For example, she mentioned the probability module, which is, which was the probability of finding different weathers around the world. So they were able to experience what a hurricane looked like, what a tropical storm looked like, which is not typically what they see here. So it was amazing to see, when we took it into the tier-one instruction, how the kids were engaging in that concrete instruction. And they were a lot more involved, engaged, and present during the note-taking process. And we do see a difference when it comes to finding the probability, well, for example, that lesson, finding the probability of different experiments based on the Prisms. So we do believe that it has helped us a lot in the classroom and the kids of all different levels in mathematics because it engages from the higher levels to the lower levels, including our EB and sped population.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Perez, who is the principal at Isleta Middle. He's here in our academics team that does the wonderful work, our instructional coaches who are always supporting them. So I don't know if you have any questions for myself or the team here.
I have. Can you bring that chart back that shows the percentages of the difference? 7th grade math, algebra, and biology. I know those, some of those grade levels are the ones that throughout the state and throughout the nation, it has been a challenging grade for us to get math across to our students. Now, the first time I saw Prisms, I thought it was something that we could really jump on and use and utilize here at Isleta and hopefully throughout the district as well. So you say there is a 5.3 difference in improvement for 7th grade math, those have been using the Prism. Is that correct?
For the SEs that it addresses, correct.
Yeah, the SE, yeah. And as well as for algebra and biology. You say that brings the real world into their eyes. You don't have to explain it. You don't have to... You explain it, but then they see it and they work with it. Now, the probability of weather and satellites, can you give me a little bit more on that?
So with the probability one, the students were having to guess based off the temperature and the humidity, what they believed, what kind of storm they believed was going to happen. And so they created their own list of what they believed, which was their theoretical probability. And then they went ahead and they spun like a wheel, and it was able to generate experimental probability, which was actually what happened. And so it was neat because every, all of the kids were getting different theoretical, but they were all getting similar experimental. And so with that vocabulary, we're able to kind of anchor it down. And so with the ratio one, they were having to send signals from Earth, or they were getting signals from a satellite, and they were having to send like a signal, and it was creating like a ratio, and it was creating a table. And so we, again, we constantly leaned back on that ratio. Okay, well, how long did it take for the satellite to send a signal to Earth? And those were what those two had to do with.
So after, I heard that you had different students get different results from their experiments.
Correct.
So you, as a teacher, what do you do at the end to bring all that together? I'm just...
Yeah, so, for example, when we create our anchor chart, we kind of allowed them to give us our data. And so the majority of them were kind of getting similar experimental. Their theoretical was different, and so we kind of, I just used based off whatever class period that one was because it was relatable to them. And then the experimental, we kind of talked about. They were like, "Oh, I got that too." Or, "Oh, mine was a little bit different." And so it was just kind of different based off every class period. But as far as the ratio one, I believe the ratio one was similar for everybody. And so it was neat because everybody was like, "Oh, yeah, I got that too." And it's just like, it creates a really good discussion within the classroom.
Is there, on this, any assessment conducted?
So like we mentioned, we kind of use this to introduce whatever topic or whatever TEAC we're talking about. After they finish the lesson, if there's a part two, we allow those, the students who finish to do a part two. If not, within the Prisms modules, there's some questions, and so we'll give them an exit ticket, and they were able to assess what they learned.
So the Prism module does create...
Yes.
Something they have to answer as well. So they just don't sit there and just let it. They have to understand what's happening.
Correct. Yeah, and they, within the headset, I'm sure you've done it, but they can ask, they have hints. They can, like, it'll notify us if they have a question. And since we've done the modules before, we can see on our screens what point the kids are at, and so we're able to kind of guide them. But a lot of it, they're able to learn within the module because I think it's at a level that they're able to understand really well.
I know I'm putting you on the spot, but from your personal assessment, what do you think? Is this something that you would like to see more utilized throughout other grade levels?
I do. So last year, we taught 6th grade advanced, and they were always asking, "Can we use them? Can we use them?" And, you know, unfortunately, we're only allowed for, or we're only given the modules for 7th grade. Our 8th graders now, they're like, "Miss, we missed them." And so I do see the benefit. You know, they're excited, and this is something that they get excited over. And so that's just, it's something that they look forward to, and they learn from it. And so I do think that other subjects, other grade levels would benefit from this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any questions?
Yes. What is your name?
Ms. Duarte.
Ms. Duarte, okay. How many classes do you teach on a daily basis?
So we have one advisory, which actually we've been able to implement as well. During advisory, we've been reviewing all of our hotspots. And so throughout the year, we're able to hit all of these TEACs that are highly tested. And so we've implemented Prisms in there as well as a way of reviewing or kind of just paralleling with what we're going with. But we teach one advisory, and then we teach five 7th grade math.
Okay, so the students change classes every 45 minutes, 40 minutes?
We have about 52, 50 to 52.
52, okay. I like that. Brenda knows what I'm talking about. What I'm getting at is, you've been doing this for a year and a half. Have you noticed a difference, and I'm going to call it enthusiasm, since you went to this Prism program? In the students, for example, are they like running to your class instead of coming in?
Sprinting.
Starting, switching, you know what I mean?
Yeah, of course, you know. And it was hard because, for example, for advisory, we had the VRs in our classrooms. And so throughout the day, they were like, "Are we doing it? Are we doing it?" And I'm like, "No, not till advisory." And so they're very eager. They're always asking, "When do we get to do it?" And so unfortunately, like we mentioned, we don't get to do it with every TEAC that we have. And so I'm like, "Not this unit, guys, not this unit." So it is something that they really look forward to.
Okay. You answered my question about the excitement. Thank you.
Yes, they're sprinting.
Well, I'm especially excited about Prisms. I think it's because it came in right as I did. So it wasn't something I had to learn about, like a lot of other things. And it was one of the first things I got to do as a school board trustee, was put on the headset, and I was very impressed. It looks like we're getting the results that I expected. I'm very happy to hear that. I also want to emphasize not just the importance of the math scores, but the importance of being able to have a real-life application as part of it. I think we're increasingly living in a world where, especially young people, are wanting to know why. Why am I doing this? We don't want to just do math problems just to do math problems. I know back when I was in school, for decades, it's always been, "We're never going to use this." And we're starting to show students that we can use this, especially if we're looking to save our planet, improve our planet. Also exposing them to the technology. Every industry is using very similar technology. So as they enter the workforce, it's just going to be something that they're already very familiar with. So I've always been very supportive of this, and I'm glad to see the results that we're seeing so far. I know there was a bit of a learning curve to start. It seems we've gotten over most of that. But what challenges still remain while using the Prism system?
So one of the biggest challenges, which I think we experience regardless whether it's Prisms or any other instructional tool, of course, is time. We try to utilize... We try to utilize as much of that to make sure that we're giving targeted instruction that our students are going to benefit from and be able to grow upon from day to day. But I think our team has done an excellent job with the partnership of our academics team here at the district to really pinpoint where we can utilize prisms to really enhance that experience for our students. Uh, PLC has been essential to making sure that we know exactly what our students are going into, what we want them to pull out of that experience. So like my teachers mentioned, really anchoring that learning for them and not really dealing with the fluff of it, but getting to the point so that they're drawing from that real life experience. So they can see how this experience, even though it's in a VR world, has real life application. That as they continue to grow up, they can reference back to this moment and say, wait a minute. I can remember in seventh grade math, this moment, and they can apply it into high school, into being an adult. And so I think with everything, we have a challenge, but our team has done a great job about tackling those. Um, time, making sure we're extremely targeted, making sure we're bringing it up to that level of rigor. As we see now with the questions that were being posed in STAR or checkpoint assessments, we want our kids to be critical thinkers. We want them to be able to analyze. And this is giving us that avenue to be able to do that in very abstract ways that they're not really used to. And so I think we're able to take those challenges and turn them into games.
That's, uh, that's very good. And also thank you for sharing about, you know, the importance of the PLC and how that helps implement this program and I'm sure other programs as well. Um, I'm guessing maybe Dr. Chacon, this question might be for you. I'm curious, is there any plans, um, I assume prisms is constantly updating their product. Is there any plans to integrate AI?
Um, they are constantly integrating. I think it has, I think it includes already a portion of AI. I'm not sure if it's prompting the students right now, like if they answer this, maybe go by, I think it does, right? Like if they answer incorrectly, for example, it prompts them to say, hey, have you thought about this, this and that? And go back. So it already has that artificial intelligence kind of embedded when the kid is, when the student is on there to say, you're not kind of on the right track, kind of go back and read, can you, can you think of this? So it does have the filtration of, okay, can you think of this and this and this? Um, they are constantly updating and you met the CEO and she was great. She's taken all our feedback and is constantly, you know, emailing us the latest and greatest. Uh, but I can dig into that a little bit more, but it does have some small components of it already that prompts a student for questioning.
Thank you. Um, last question, and I'm reluctant to ask it because I'm so supportive of this. But what's the cost of this program to the district?
I don't have it off the top of my head. The first initial cost was the heaviest, uh, which was purchasing the VR, which is that we use our ESSER funds. When we had ESSER, it was right on time and that's what we purchased for. From here on, it has a student, per student cost license. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, I can send you that cost, but I want to say it was about $15,000. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but I can send it.
15,000?
Per license.
I think that's a pretty good price considering everything. Um, Ms. Lindley or Dr. Chacon, if you'd be able to give me the exact number.
I can give it to you right now. I can text.
Yeah, whenever you have a chance.
I think is actually here. He can let me know. This does come out of our instructional materials allotment. So because it's an instructional material, it does come out of IMA. So we, that's how we pay for it.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. I'm very excited to see Isleta Middle School here. Ms. Benes, thank you for being here. Appreciate it. And thank you for all you do.
We have one more question.
Um, what I was wondering is because this sounds like such a great program and so many great things are coming from it, do we have any opportunity of expanding it?
Sure. For just a few more dollars, right? Um, so one of the things, a lot of them have asked, okay, can we do it in the elementary? Uh, but as you know, or maybe you don't know, there is a VR rule that a certain student below the age of 10 can not legal liability from prisms. They can't put them under, at home you can, right? Under supervision, but at a school setting you can't. So until that rule changes, it, it doesn't go down to the elementary. Can we expand in more subjects? Absolutely. They do have several things that they can expand in more grade levels, purchase more headsets and so forth for just a few dollars.
Yeah. I understand that cost is a, a big thing to look at, but when you have a great tool that really touches the hearts and minds of kids, to me, that's money that's well spent. So.
I, I agree. Nobody would say that more than I do. I agree, Ms. Woodruff.
I got a quick question. Um, the doctor that invented the prisms and introduced it to, do you remember her name?
Um, Ms. Anarupa. I can't remember her last name, but I call her Anarupa.
So the question is, is, um, does she still very hands-on with this? And if so, how much so?
Very much so. As a matter of fact, uh, her company has grown to the point where she's had to add quite a bit of staff. It's a national company and large districts are asking for the experience for their students. She's doing very well. Yeah.
But she still looks at our data and, and helps us out?
Yes. She, uh, she has, like Dr. Thoda said, sales reps that obviously are part of our, our, uh, service team too. But anytime if you reach out to her, you email her, she checks in, she texts me, she'll, you know, say, how's it going? Things like that. So she's always keeping an eye on us. Uh, she features us or she features a district anytime that she can to just share the results and the things that are happening at a district due to the population we serve where it is possible. So she does take that opportunity to also highlight the district.
Thank you.
Can I ask a couple of questions? But first I want to say thank you for being here. This was a great, um, conversation to walk into and I appreciate the color coordination, even with Dr. Chacon. Yeah. Impressive. This is wonderful news. We, as board members, we do discuss almost every meeting, math, math, math. And to see that there's something that's touching us, Connie, um, Ms. Whatever, put it, the, the hearts and minds of our students is so essential and the work that you are doing is so impactful. How many students across the district do we have this program in? And, um, as, as Ms. Trustee stated, uh, do we have this in the, in the budget? Are we planning for this within the budget if we do need expansion?
So I would say that this right, because you have three grade levels, algebra, which is eighth grade, seventh grade, and then bio. So I would say approximately about 6,000 plus students, give or take, have prisms, the opportunity to use prisms right now. That's in addition to, that's kind of your baseline. In addition to teachers, when they do have, uh, for example, if the eighth grade teachers wanted to use it or geometry and so on and so forth, they also have the opportunity to, to go into the, the prisms as well. Uh, I currently do have it in the budget to pay for the student license for next year through your instructional material allotment. So I will pay, that's how it gets funded right now through the IMA fund. So is there money to expand that I will be completely honest, there is not in the budget currently right now. I know we're all awaiting the never ending news from Austin. So, but in the budget right now, we do have it to continue funding the, uh, per student license fee. That also included some staff development, um, last year too, since it was new. Uh, most of our teachers, um, have been trained and the coaches are very well versed. And so that is a place where we will also offer less staff development and depend on our coaches and so forth. Unless we have a new teacher, we'll offer them a session in the fall.
And Dr. Chacon, does it look this way at Del Valle Middle School, Eastwood Middle School? Like all of our middle schools share the same wonderful work that this team's doing.
We picked the best teachers tonight. Just joking. That's not true. Uh, they, yes. I mean, any school that we could have selected, any of their schools, and you would see the same, probably the same enthusiasm, the same results. This is all of our schools. Uh, some teachers, um, such as these ladies gravitate to it more because they're more comfortable with technology and the VR world. Others, kind of that learning curve like we experienced at the beginning. Um, but it's been something that the district, it's their focus. It was one of your big priorities for us. So we continued to embed it in our academic trainings. And I think that's the key is, um, our coaches are part of it. So it kind of cascades through the organization through, okay, we, uh, the coaches know, so they push it through their PLC. And then our principals, obviously progress monitor to say, hey, I should see prisms when I walk into this classroom, right? During this module. So it's kind of a cycle of, of instruction and what we do. So yes, we do make sure that the experience should be the same for all students.
Well, I want to say that, um, way back last year, was it when we first introduced prison? Or we thought about using prison? Um, we all here at the board, uh, supported it because we all talk about the 21st century. But what does that mean, the 21st century? This is a small sample. There's more to come, I'm sure. As the technology changes and the instruction and everything else, Isleta, I think has always been in the forefront to, to introduce such, such a, such a technique as prisms into our classroom. We are not afraid to use it. We, we will use it to the advantage of our, our students and our teachers. And I think that's, that says a lot that 21st century is here. And 10, 20 years from now, we're going to look back and say, prisms? Oh man, that was like, you know, nothing compared to what that's going to be in 20 years from now. But we're here and I'm very glad to hear what's happening in our classrooms. So thanks to you all and the teachers that are not here tonight either. Um, thanks to them as well. I think we were, we're doing well with that. So thank you.
And I echo that. It depends, we have great teachers, um, and great personnel, great principals that, you know, make things happen for kids. And so we're very fortunate about that.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Ochoa, members of the board and Dr. De La Torre. This evening I have a presentation on our budget development process for our next fiscal year and we're going to jump right into it. Tonight we are prepared to talk to you about revenue projections. But as Dr. Chacon mentioned, we are waiting breathlessly for information out of the state legislature. As a result, you'll see that these projections are taking into consideration only the information that we currently have available. We'll also talk briefly about staffing projections for next year and the staffing meetings that have already taken place. Um, in March, we will likely not have any more relevant information for you because vouchers have different bills or school choice has competing bills, one coming from the senate, one from the house. And they are very disparate. I don't think we'll have good information on our revenue projections or the ability to talk to you about what's the gap between revenue and expenditures by the time we get to March. So I anticipate that we'll have a very general discussion. We'll have an update on here's what the legislature is saying. We'll also talk a little bit at that time about historically what's happened to us with regard to the mandate from the state regarding compensation. As you know, the governor's got an emergency priority that talks about teachers' compensation, the teachers vacancy and shortage across the state. And so we'll talk to you a little bit then about what we are seeing, what we're hearing, what we're anticipating may be included in our own budget. Now I'm pleased to say that at Isleta, this board has done a great job of recruiting, maintaining the best teachers. And we don't, we don't routinely have vacancies. I think, um, Ms. Russell Garcia would say that, and the instructional staff, we're fully staffed. So, um, we've done a good job of staying ahead of the market or at least staying even with the market. I don't want to say ahead of, because obviously with 20% inflation over the last six years, it's very difficult to say that we've stayed ahead of the market. But with that being said, let me move directly into the presentation and let's talk about student enrollment. So as you know, there are two elements that the state looks at with regard to funding for the district. They look at overall student enrollment and they look at ADA. In the past, especially pre-pandemic, we estimated a loss every year of 500 students and that pretty well bore out. Post pandemic, we didn't anticipate the losses that we immediately experienced. We thought we would still see 500. Instead, we went to 1,500 a year. And so between 2016, 17 and 24, 25, we've lost 7,600 students, far more than we anticipated. In fact, we should have lost based on original estimates about 4,000. If I take that and equate enrollment to revenue, you're talking about roughly $8,000 per student. That's 60 million in revenue lost between 2016, 17 and today, 24, 25. If we anticipate another thousand students lost next year, we're talking about dropping to 32,900 in enrollment and an additional eight million, if there's no change in funding to our revenue stream based on enrollment. ADA, I'm pleased to say, before the pandemic, we averaged 95, 96%. We dropped after the pandemic to 92% in 21, 22 and 93% in 22, 23. Thanks to the attendance task force and the various campaigns run by district affairs, student services, we're now seeing ADA come back up to the 94%. And that's in spite of some of the most recent executive orders and other concerns that we've seen across the city and state, causing students perhaps not to come to school. So there's where we stand on student enrollment and ADA. So then let's talk a little bit, yes ma'am?
While we're on student enrollment ADA, with the passing of the voucher program, have we, um, do we anticipate any further, uh, loss of enrollment?
So I think that's always possible, but given what we've already lost and the lack of options, if you will, we don't have a lot of private school opportunities here in El Paso. And I think we have already seen the students we're going to lose going to charters. And quite frankly, there aren't that many of them. Even though we've dropped in enrollment, we're still pulling 6,000 from the districts around us. So our transfers in are far more than we've lost in a year, right? 6,000 every year come to us and we're losing a thousand a year. So I don't think we're going to see a significant loss due to the vouchers. And I love what Dr. De La Torre says, we're willing to compete with anyone. We'd like a fair playing field, but we don't think anyone out there is going to outperform us. So we're okay with, um, the vouchers in, in that sense, because we do believe we compete and we compete well. Okay? All right. So when we talk about the assumptions, as I mentioned, we're waiting breathlessly for information from the state. So the revenue that we're building, our revenue assumption we're building into the budget includes a decline in enrollment by a thousand students. I already mentioned that. We're talking about ADA staying at 94%. Obviously we're urging higher, but 94 is really good comparatively and far better than we see around us. We're not anticipating at the moment, a change in the basic allotment of 6,160. There is talk about an increase, 200 to $400 is what we're hearing. I'm pleased because also initial discussions indicate that there may be more funding for the special allocation. So for CTE, for CCMR, for special education, which benefits us greatly. And you'll see that as we get to another slide in just a moment where I talk about some of the restricted funding that we receive. So with this budget right now, I'm not building in any of that special program weighted funding, but I'll talk to you a little bit more about that in a moment. We aren't anticipating any additional revenue for the school safety allotment. At $10 per ADA and 15,000 per school, this equates to about a million dollars a year for us. That's people and materials alone. It does not take into consideration any of the capital improvements that are currently being required. Not the entry resistant film, not the fencing, not the doors, all of those things. There are some grants for them, but it's not nearly enough to cover those capital improvements that are being required of us. And then with regard to school health and related services, this revenue goes to support, um, special education services. And you heard a lot last year about the audit of the state by the feds, all the way back to 2011, that we were not faring well when we tried to appeal. And so just to give you a little bit of context, in 2022, the revenue we received from SARS was $10 million. In 2025, we estimate it's going to be 2 million. Last year it was 3.2 million. So considering the number of students and that we have the highest population of special education students, this is a very unfair allocation in our minds. It certainly doesn't go anywhere near where we need it to in order to support the number of students that we support and support very well. So in terms of revenue, you can see that this fiscal year, we have 379.46 estimated in revenue. Total revenue far right, second to the last column on the right. Next year with the revenue not changing in the assumptions, we're looking at probably 362.7 in revenue. Certainly about a 12, 13 million dollar, uh, I'm sorry, 16 million dollar gap. So I want to talk to you a little bit about these restricted state funds. And because it will come up and because you're going to ask me questions about them as we get to the part where we analyze expenditures. We're not doing that tonight, but the revenue will have, um, a say in how we reduce expenditures in the future. So these restricted funds are state allocated revenues. So these restricted funds are state allocated revenues that are either legally or contractually required to be used for specific purpose. And so some of the programs that we support with these funds are special education, CTE, gifted and talented, and what we call state comp ed. They're regulated by state law, and the TEA sets the compliance rules as well as other authorities. We have to track the expenditure separately, and we're audited on how well do we track them and can we report on them. And you can't repurpose the money. So that's a big consideration as we go to the next slide. So I can't take it and just automatically move it to pay for general administrative purposes or unrelated program expenditures. And so with that being said, let's talk a little bit about this slide. On the far-left column, you're going to see the state program allotment. You can see I start with bilingual education, there's CTE, comp ed, CCMR, dyslexia, early ed, gifted and talented, and special education. The program intent code, you'll hear us refer to as the PIC code. It's just the way we track the money, track the revenue and track the expenditure. The third column represents the statute that explains how and what this money can be used for. And then the fourth column tells us how much we must spend of that money per year. Now, we get roughly three years to make sure we meet the spending requirement, but there are risks to not meeting it. And actually, in our district, we mandate that you spend it every year, because it gets harder to spend as you accumulate the funds and it rolls over. And then the legislative planning estimate is the estimate that legislature is saying we should expect to receive as of January 10, 2025. So you can see for bilingual education allotment, we expect to receive $6.596 million in revenue. That means we're required to spend 55% of that in the coming year at $3.6 million. Our adopted budget for this year is $3.9, meaning that we spend $368,000 more for bilingual education than we get from the state. Okay? Does that make sense? All right. So I'm not going to go through each line, because you can obviously follow the pattern now. But I will direct your attention to our early ed, and I don't want Dr. Chacon to have a conniption over there. We provide universal pre-K, and this is largely where this money comes from. It's a tremendous benefit to those students, and we do believe it improves our enrollment. So when we get those babies and they find out how great Isleta is, they don't want to go anywhere else. So I think this is a worthwhile investment at $2.2 million more than the state allocates to us. And then the very last line, I will... Obviously, this is a big one, and I want you to see it. If the state estimates we're going to get $32.6 in revenue, we spend $53.9, $36 million more to serve our special education students, which is why it's so important that the state is considering this additional funding for special education and why it would also help offset that Sharz revenue that we're losing on the revenue side. Now, I want to warn you that we can't just stop spending this money. There's a maintenance of effort requirement, and we could risk losing all the money if we don't maintain the same level of effort from year to year. So the only way you can reduce expenditures is to prove that it was for a one-time expense. So for example, if I put a sensory room at every campus, which by the way, we've already done, and we did through the bond for the most part, but if I could demonstrate that from these funds, I paid for sensory rooms, and that was a one-time expense, and it's been done everywhere, they would let me reduce my maintenance effort by that one cost. But that's not what we spend our money on. Our money goes to staff. By and large, 95% of all these expenditures are related to the people directly providing the services. So once again, you have a dilemma, because we provide the best special education services in the city, our students outperform every other district in the area, and we invest in it. So as we move through this process, you're going to see me saying, don't fret yet. Let's don't analyze and try to figure out where to cut, because until the state tells me how much revenue I'm going to get, I can't even tell you the delta between revenue and expenditures and say, okay, let's start chipping away at this gap, right? We need more information from the state in order to give you an estimate that says, okay, we've got to deal with a $30 million deficit or a $40 million deficit, and how are we going to do it? And quite frankly, this would be the last place I'd start. So I wanted you to see this and to explain some of it and how it works. Yes, we can reduce it, but the outcome or the effect of doing so is damaging not only to the students, but very difficult to overcome, because we're still required to spend those levels of funding in each category. Okay? All right. So again, we talked a little bit about this last month. We've already held our campus staffing meetings. In fact, most of these meetings were held in December before we went on break. And these are collaborative discussions, so Ms. Russell Garcia can explain this far better than I can, but I'm going to have a go at it. So we take, if we have second-grade students at a campus, we roll those over to third grade, and we say, what's the population of third-grade students going to be next year? And do we need a dual teacher or a mono teacher? And we do that at every single campus. And we estimate, we break up that 1,000-student loss by campus based on trends that have occurred over the last five to seven years. Then we say, all right, based on that rollover of enrollment and the projected loss of students, how many teachers, how many counselors, how many AP, how many of each of the particular positions do we need at that campus, given these assumptions? And then we work with the staff at the campus to say, we're going to give you some say in this. Here's what we see, and here's what we're going to project. We're giving you an opportunity to say, well, you know what, this teacher's retiring. I've already gotten word that this one is retiring, this one is moving, they're in the military. So we take all those things into consideration. Our objectives are to review current and projected enrollment, to determine staffing, then to assess the number of teachers, support staff already there, then to align staffing with the budget, and then to address specific staffing needs, keep in mind again, for special ed, for English-language learners and any other specialized programs. Participants, campus principals, and the entire leadership team generally, HR staff, finance staff, which includes the comptroller, the budget director, and then we'll have three people, various people from HR, depending on whether it's secondary or support staff that we're talking about, obviously myself, Dr. Chacon, Ms. Russell Garcia, and then special program directors, federal and state, is in the room. And we, at the end, we come to an agreement or an understanding, everybody signs off on it, and we come away with a finalized staffing plan. Now, keep in mind, it's a plan, so we always have leveling. And generally, that leveling occurred after Labor Day, and it still, I think, does, because we find that students will not return to school just because we start school. So it is better for us to conduct leveling after Labor Day, and then we go through and we shift as we need to, to match the student enrollment. And that generally summarizes the process of setting staffing at the campuses. This year, we are raising the student-teacher ratio at the secondary level only, from 25.0 to one teacher, up to 25 and 1/2 to one. Again, that's middle school and high school and fifth grade only, but fifth grade, I'm sorry, fifth grade is staying at 25. Fifth grade is different than PK through four. PK through four must remain at 22 to one. And so other than middle and high schools, we're not changing the staffing ratio, and there we're raising it by, if you will, half a student. Half a student, I'm going to take them.
Can you kind of explain how that's figured out? Because my mind doesn't wrap around this half a kid. I'm sorry.
So we set the ratio, but obviously, we don't have half a child, right? So we would say it's 25, and then we might have 26 in this one and 24 in that one, if you will, something along those lines.
Then you just average?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But we're using an average of 25 and 1/2. No, that's okay. It is a quandary, for sure. Okay, and that's it, actually. I can take any questions you might have now.
Mr. President? Thank you. Ms. Lindley, thank you for the presentation, as always. I know we're still waiting on what's going to happen with the state, and it's really hard to have a detailed conversation. We'll be voting, we'll be adopting a budget in June. So I think the May meeting is critical. Then I think it's the time that I hope the board can be presented with different options, even options that you may not recommend, for the benefit of the public to know what we as a board can actually do and what the consequences of those actions would be. You know, what are the consequences if we're cutting certain funds? What are the consequences if we're increasing revenues and depleting the general fund? It sounds like the school board across ISDs have very little say in what we can do with the budget. It seems like these funds can only be used for this, and you have to spend this much. So what I'm really looking, but maybe you can help answer this now, is what is the dollar amount that we as a school board can actually play with, so to speak? You know, what are the options that we have to say? Or do you disagree with that assessment that there's very little that we can do as a board, since much of it is state-mandated?
So if you think about the budget as being, say, $450 million, and on this slide, you can see that of that legislative planning aid, I'm going to say 32, 80, I'm going to say that's $100 million that's off the table, if you will, in terms of spending, because it's restricted to this purpose. So 450, then you've got 350. Now, keep in mind, most of this is personnel, and 86% of your entire budget is personnel. And to your point about bringing you options, that's exactly what we'll do, and my expectation is that you'll get it in May. Often, I will take administrative recommendations, and there are some we can implement ourselves. So we know, and we work very closely as cabinet, to say, we've got these vacancies. Let's hold this one. Can we repurpose this one? Can we combine these functions and have one person do both jobs? So we do that a lot in the behind-the-scenes. When we come back in May, I anticipate giving you many choices to work through, so that you can see the outcome of your decisions, along with recommendations from us, because obviously, I tell you, you may want to reduce special education some, but if you want to obtain the results you've always attained, you're not going to want to reduce it much. But we will bring you those, along with recommendations, and then expected outcomes if that's the funding option you take.
I'm of the opinion that what we can do as a board is very limited, and the experiences that all our staff has, especially our teachers, and the students' experience is heavily dependent on what the state decides. It does concern me to hear, while it sounds fiscally, you know, responsible and good, it does concern me that we may be asking teachers to do the job of two people.
Not teachers, administrative staff. I can give you a great example. This week, we determined that we were going to consolidate grounds facilitation, a grounds coordinator position with a custodial facilitator position. The person that took over grounds came from custodial. They are actually very capable and have done a great job in both roles, and we said, you know what? This is a vacancy. Let's combine the position and have one facilitator that does both custodial and grounds coordination. So no, there are very strict requirements about what teachers can do contractually and legally. So we don't, no, we don't ask them to. We talk about administrative roles and things like that, especially central office and elsewhere where we have that freedom to do so.
Okay, so I want to be very clear. We will not be asking teachers to increase their workload?
I'm not going to say that, Dr. Chacon, because we get legislative requirements that say, you now have to provide this service, and we already talk about the fact that that is, many teachers are overwhelmed with requirements. We are not going to ask it. I can't say the state won't tell us, you're going to have to provide this outcome, and you have to do this kind of report, which we hadn't had to do in the past.
So it sounds like the board is even limited in the duties that we can assign to teachers. The state is telling us what we have to do, and we can't do anything to change that. I think that's worth pointing out, but I do believe there is some things that we can do, especially if the extra funds are not coming in. If we're not able to compensate our teachers more because of limited funding, then I think we need to do something to reduce their workload. It might be something as simple as limiting the burden of meetings. I don't know. But these are the kind of suggestions that I'm looking for.
Certainly.
And I imagine we might have very tough decisions. I also want to thank WTA and YTA for being here. Your input is incredibly important. You all do a fantastic job of advocating for your members, and I really think we're in a good place right now, where we can work together. I think we're having a very honest conversation about the situation we're in. I think we all want the same things, which is high pay and fantastic services, so that our students can succeed. Just might be a bit of a puzzle, it might be a bit of a work, it might be a bit of a sacrifice. I also want to emphasize that let's not think about things as all or nothing. I think you touched on that. You know, just because, you know, this is good, we may just have to cut back a little bit here and a little bit here, where it makes sense. It's a terrible thing, your performance is going to suffer, but I would blame that on the state.
We'll be sure to bring you all.
So thank you. And, you know, I also look forward to working with my colleagues. Again, teacher unions, please reach out, please help bring solutions, so we as a board can present them and try to get it as close to something that works for everybody. Thank you, Ms. Lindley.
Of course.
Ms. Lindley, obviously, we saw a couple weeks ago the executive orders that were going out. What impact do these executive orders have on a micro level, which is our district? Can you explain that? I know that they went in and then they came back out, so I think everybody was kind of worried about that throughout, as far as the federal education cuts and stuff like that on these amendments. Yeah?
Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm not following the question. Are you asking me about physical adjustments? Are you asking me about attendance? Are you asking about funding?
No, just the funding. The funding.
Okay. So generally speaking, we get a total of about $30 million annually from the feds. Only 2% of that actually impacts the general fund. The rest is restricted in federal funds, where it can only be spent for specific purposes. And so currently, there's no impact. Those commitments are still flowing. The original perception was, oh, my gosh, federal grants have been shut off, and as I mentioned earlier, with many of our restricted funds, they affect personnel. We've had no issues, no federal fund halt or anything like that. All funds are continuing to flow, so no impact to education today from those executive orders.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lindley, as far as, this is going to be a very hard year, as I feel like last year was not easy either, as we went into budget and planning. And I believe we've always done, we've always been very fair. We are fair in the way we make the decisions for our teachers, for our support staff. My question is, I'm really concerned about our hourly employees. As the price of eggs is $10, everything is increasing, and our hourly employees, it's a struggle. I always bring this up, but you all know I've been a single parent on this board for many years. And, you know, sometimes I've had to carry two jobs to make it, and I want to know if instead of cuts, if there is a possible way, if we have any funds, to find something to be able to compensate our hourly employees. And I don't want to leave our teachers out, but the reality is, we are a community in this school district, and as a community, when there's parts of our community that needs more, I believe we have to find a way to come up together to meet that gap.
So when we come in May with expenditure options and actually a bigger picture that says, here's what we believe the gap is, we will also bring to you recommendations or at least an analysis that says if you do a 1%, a 2%, a 3%, and you do it to the hourly, or you do it to the midpoint on the salary range, we will have that information for you. Now, keep in mind, even though last year there was nothing on the salary schedule or no hourly... or no hourly adjustment, the equivalent, the five hundred dollar stipend is the equivalent of one percent, even though it's not on the schedule, and that went to every employee. So hourly employees, which we are sensitive to, also benefited from that one-time stipend. Yes, sir?
Could you put that first chart that you had up there that showed the schedule?
And while you're doing that, I, I want to state for the record, I'm vehemently opposed to any cuts in special education.
Yes, ma'am. Is this the one, sir?
No, the one that had the monthly, the monthly.
Monthly.
Way back, in the beginning. Mass. That one.
Ah.
All right. So we're looking, we're in February right now.
Yes, sir.
There is a lot of uncertainty that is happening at the state level that could impact us one way or the other, hopefully in the positive. But I caution everyone to just monitor what's happening, where I think most of our, my colleagues have stated what they're, they're looking for, what they're worried about, but we need to just wait and see what happens. And I trust that either way, that you will all come up with a right plan, or not the right plan, but a plan, so we can address whatever it is we, we see in May, which is still a couple of months away. And if anything does happen that would impact us, I would really appreciate that you would at least send something to the board notifying them what, what is your assessment of what this will do to our budget. That way, we can have a better understanding of how to prepare for May, or whenever it does come down to that.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And as you know, Mr. Monta is doing a great job of monitoring the legislation coming out of both houses, and so we're aware of that there's a Senate bill and it doesn't match the House bill. And when that all comes together and we actually know the outcome, we will definitely be updating projections, because I need to know immediately what those impacts are.
I know you all are, our day-to-day, that's the first thing you do, but as a board, I think we would appreciate a little bit of information on that so we can, you know, start formulating some ideas as to what to expect at that time. Also, can you go down to the staffing of how this was all, I think it was? More. Participants. Now, what, what does, what do these participants do, or did they do?
So we all meet together typically by teams now. We used to do it in person, but we meet by teams because we don't want to take principals off the campus. They're very busy, and to come all the way down to central office is often inconvenient in the middle of their day. So together with the campus principal, often APs, we will meet, and then the rest of these cabinet-level or central office administrators that are involved in the development of the budget. We all meet together and talk about what we expect enrollment to do. Campus principals have the opportunity asked, to ask us questions about how we arrived at the particular forecast for their campus and what we anticipate their enrollment will be. Yes, sir?
Yes, I see that. Where do the teachers have any input in this at all, or do they?
In terms of the staffing, they don't.
Well, no, but do they have a channel that they, or somebody that they can address their own views on, on this?
Certainly their administrator, their campus principal.
I don't know if that's enough.
So are you, are you more referring to the ratio and the change?
No, I'm just saying about the planning or the, you know, what is it that you're discussing as far as the budget? Where does, I know we have a lot of representation from our teachers, but where do they have a venue or something that they can address some of their own concerns?
So with regard to this particular meeting, because it doesn't, it doesn't relate to what's happening in the classroom, or what will be expected of the teacher in the next year, this really isn't a forum for expressing their concerns, questions, or other?
Well, I'm sure it impacts their, their salary and their employment.
No, sir, this does not.
The budget?
No, sir. This does not. This merely tells us how many teachers do we think are needed at this specific campus to serve the students we anticipate will arrive next year.
Okay. Okay. I'll be interested to hear from the teachers and see what they say about that.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
I had a couple of questions. When was the midpoint salary for, I guess salary personnel is fifty thousand?
For all personnel or for teachers?
Because you said the midpoint was one percent, the five hundred dollars?
Yes, roughly one percent. It's equivalent to a one percent increase on the salary schedule.
So would the midpoint be for hourly?
Do you know, Bobby?
Mr. Haggard, it would just depend on the level. For hourly personnel, our minimum is about thirteen dollars an hour, and it goes up to about twenty-five, thirty dollars an hour. So we're looking at roughly?
You said it goes to twenty-five to thirty-five an hour?
Yeah, twenty-five to thirty-five.
So thirty. I think probably a better way to look at it is if eighty percent of our overall budget, which is four hundred million, we're going to use that round number, that would make three hundred and twenty million, the salary cost, roughly one percent would be three and a half million. For upper-level administrators, obviously, it's not anywhere near one percent on, at mid-level. For a teacher, it might be close to it. For an hourly, it's probably more than one percent, if you're talking about bus drivers, cafeteria workers, ancillary staff.
And then one more thing, when you were talking with Mr. Cruz, you brought up Microsoft Teams, which I know costs extra. How much extra does that cost? Because there's plenty of free video conferencing software.
So Teams is part of the suite, and we subscribe to the suite.
Right, but you can get it with and without Teams.
I will tell you this, that that's TIS contracts are something we're going to look closely at, because we know that those are some of our most expensive costs for Munis, for the Google Suite, for the Microsoft Suite. All of those are very expensive, but I don't know the, off the top of my head, but I will get you an answer.
Thank you. And again, the reason I'm asking is we can take that money and turn it directly into money for salaries?
Well, I can tell you that one of the reasons we, we had Zoom during COVID, and we had Google without some of the security provisions, and we had some exciting occurrences in our virtual meetings, virtual classroom meetings. And so we went to more secure platforms to avoid some of those situations, and Teams happens to be highly secure in terms of the things we already own.
Right, but there's other ones that are free that have the same level or?
I will be happy to get you the cost on both. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Haggard, if I might add, we, we ran one percent last year for twenty-four, twenty-five, and it would be about eight hundred thousand dollars for our hourly staff if we do one percent.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
The 2024, 2025 adopted budget was for expenditures of four hundred and eighty-four point five million, correct?
Are you looking at all funds or just general fund? I don't have the numbers.
I think total expenditures. Well, it's okay if I could get this answered at the next workshop for public record. I want to know what our actual expenditures have been for the budget. Could that be presented at the next workshop?
Sure.
Thank you.
An actual to budget comparison?
Yeah, the, the actual compared to the adopted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. That's a, that's a great recommendation. I also want to say that historically, and I've been very proud as a board member to watch this in action, our superintendent and his support staff, you all work very closely with the union. I would like to see that as you're navigating through these processes for, for, to know and learn that we have a report back from those meetings, how they're coming out, what the conversations are, if we're, if we're aligning. I would like to see us aligned so that when we do get to June, we are on the same page, as close to the page as we can get, because I think it's important, again, we're a community, and we do need to all work together as we navigate these insecure times.
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And we'll finish with a report from our internal auditor, Ms. Amy Sanchez.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Delatorre, Board of Trustees. I'll be presenting our 2024 audit results, as well as our proposed 2025 audit plan. In 2024, we completed seventeen full audits as, across whether it's campus, carryover, or non-campus. We did, we do have a few non-campus audits in progress, and quite a few campus audits currently in progress. That number's a little higher than it actually is now, since we've drafted this presentation. We've issued some audits, and there are a few that are ready, but just a couple of holdups. In addition to our audit projects, we also have continued to do our follow-up reviews. We've done seventeen full campus follow-up audits, and all of those, we've determined that the corrective action plans were fully implemented. The next few slides will show the status of all campus audits we've done in the last two years, and the status of their corrective action plans. This list represents the twenty-five campuses, which we've completed their audits, and also determined that their corrective action plans were fully implemented. We did have one audit where there were no items for follow-up. There are three schools that we are currently following up right now. The eight on your right, the audits are complete, and their follow-ups will be done later this These are the audits, the campus audits currently in progress. Those on your left are just about completed, actually, half of those are already done since we've issued this, and a few just have some holdups, but they're ready to be issued. The ones on the right, we're actively working on. In addition to the audit projects that we do, we do monitor our fraud, abuse, and waste hotline. Throughout the year, we've received seventeen reports. Three of these were audit-related. Only one of those resulted in an audit report. Five were not audit-related. They were forwarded to the appropriate departments to resolve. And nine were personnel-related, and all forwarded to Human Resources, and they followed up on all. This is the final 2024 budget to actual. As you can see, most of our hours were spent on campus audits. We didn't spend as much time as we would have liked on the non-campus audits, and the 2025 plan will show how we're going to try and reverse that. This is the audit plan list from 2024, the summary. As you can see, the non-campus audits on the right, we didn't get to as many as we would have liked, and we're revising our strategy, and you'll see as we present, as I present the 2025 proposed plan for your consideration. This is a summary of all of our audit findings, sorted by risk level. We have four different risk levels: priority, high, medium, and low. The difference in the risk levels essentially is how they could affect the district's reputation, as well as prevent the district from meeting their goals and objectives. As you can see, we had no red level priority findings in our audit reports. We did have three that were in the high level, and this represents individual findings, not necessarily entire audits. We had seventy-seven items in the medium category and fifty-five in the low category. And next, the next few slides will show you our proposed 2025 audit plan. So you can see that we are readjusting our assignment of hours. The number on your right represents hours, and that's calculated based on how many people are in the department and how many hours are available in the, in the year. The next couple of slides will go into detail on what exactly those audits we're proposed, we're proposing. These are campus audits and non-campus audits. Now, although we are trying to shift focus to non-campus, we can't leave our campuses alone, because there are still some significant areas to review regarding cash handling and fundraising. We do plan to still review that, those processes at the campuses, but this will be on a surprise cash basis. We've talked with the chiefs, the associates, and they've talked, communicated this with the principals as well, so everyone knows our intention is to do surprise cash audits in the future. Now, there'll be a lower scope, not as many items that we'll review as our full audit, but this will still give us an opportunity to, to touch each campus. Attendance, the absence coding, that's still important to review. We'll be looking at it more on a data, data analytical basis. The same with PMS reporting, that's your, your coding of students. The last one is a new one that we started this last year, and we found it to be helpful. We will still look at special education documentation compliance, looking at various IEPs and making sure that the documentation is in place to support, that the services are being given to the students. On the right are the non-campus risk-based audits. We don't have these fully scoped out yet. These are the ones, as we developed our risk assessment, that showed up highest on the And there is a cushion at the bottom, unplanned projects for, in case something unplanned comes up. Next, we still continue to do our follow-up reviews, so those audits that we have completed, we still intend to do their follow-up to ensure that corrective action plans are implemented, and the handful of audits that are carried, that will be carried over from 2024 that are currently in process. And finally, I just wanted to communicate one change in the internal audit profession. Last month, there have been new internal audit standards adopted. The institution of internal auditors worked the last couple of years to shift from their international professional practices framework into what they now call global internal audit standards. So these are now in place as of January, so you'll, we'll be evaluating our processes, procedures, in order to maintain compliance with these new standards. Some of the key changes, one of them was just structural, so they combined the Code of Ethics and Principles and Definitions into one document. Another key change is they, is a more emphasis on the role of the board. One of the things that they explicitly ask is for the chief audit executive to be actively engaged in communications with the board members and senior management, which I already, I already am. I speak with senior management, and I report to the board regularly. Another area that will be a little bit of a, of a change is the explicit link between our audit projects and the institution's strategic plan, the institutional goals. So we need to explicitly explain how our audit projects tie in with the district's strategic plan and goals. I, I know that the strategic plan is being actively updated right now, so we'll make sure and follow that closely, and explain how our audits support the, the goals of the institution. Any, any questions?
Ms. Sanchez?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for this presentation, and you have been very engaged with the board, and I appreciate you taking that time. A quick question about, I wasn't sure what it meant when I saw that hours were budgeted, but some, we went over?
So, the budget to actual hours overall?
Yes.
Yes, so the first column is what we planned to do, the second column is what actually happened. So essentially, we spent more of our time on the campus audits. So internally, we've been in discussions on what we can do better to stick to our budgets. For the campus audits in particular, they took longer than anticipated. We added more attendance coding reviews than we have done in the past. In addition, we added special education review, so that isn't something that we had planned initially.
But these extra hours are an additional cost to the district?
No, the actual just means...
You just had to spend more time on it, but it wasn't an actual financial cost to the district?
No, there's no cost. It just means we couldn't do something else.
That was the question I was getting at. Thank you for clarifying that.
Our resources are purely the hours that we spend, so if we spend too much on one, that's less for another one.
Thank you for clarifying. Thank you.
Also, it's great that you spent the hours on that because those are the things that we do, can reduce our funding or put us in an extremely bad place that we never want to end up. So those are important places, and I'm glad that you're going to include those in the upcoming plan.
Yes.
On the campus audits, these are not done, every campus is not done annually, right?
No, our goal was to complete them in two years, so the list, let me get, these were what was done in the last two years.
Okay.
So the surprise cash audits, we will try to do annually, though, all campuses. Because there'll be less of a scope.
How are you going to determine what schools are going to get this audit?
Ideally, all of them will be.
Oh, okay. They just don't know when you're coming?
Yes, exactly. Exactly.
All of them?
Hopefully.
Really? Okay.
It'll be at a less scale than we have before.
Okay. Nice to know. Okay, so you budgeted, well, for next year, for this coming, you budgeted less campus hours. Is that correct?
Yes.
Where's your main focus on, based on this? Let me see if I can find it.
It'll be on non-campus.
Non-campus. Can you give me an example of non-campus?
So as a result of our risk assessment, we have the non-campus audits on the board now I've listed. We have accounting services, campus safety, federal and state programs, fixed assets, risk management, one in T I S. Those are the ones we've anticipated so far.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, thank you. I really appreciate it, this presentation.
Thank you.
Oh, you have a question? No, you don't have a question. Go back to the...
Okay.
President Cruz, I just kind of want to backtrack because I'll kick myself if I don't speak up. I'm going back to Ms. Camberne's presentation on the budgets, the school budgets. It won't take long. I promise I won't be long-winded. I'm piggybacking on Ms. Lucero, just to let you know. Last week, on Thursday, I had a long discussion with Ms. Delmat, our legal counsel, and we specifically talked about paraprofessionals and ancillary personnel in our district and throughout the state of Texas. I wanted to make sure that Senator Cesar Blanco and our representative Vince Pettis did not forget that group of people who are crucial in our public school system. There's just a couple of facts on this budget issue. There's two sides, obviously, in Austin: public schools and vouchers. There's 5.5 million to 6 million public school children in the state of Texas. The voucher program is going to deal with 100,000 students at a cost of $1 billion. That's what they're proposing right now. If this continues over the years, whether it's two years or three years, that $1 billion skyrockets, five, six, seven, eight billion, very quickly. I believe in fair play, and I've had this discussion with Dr. Delatorre, Mr. Cesar Blanco, and Vince Pettis. Vince Pettis and I had breakfast. I was a teacher at Bel Air for 27 years. He was a student at Bel Air, so we have that Highlander connection going back. And everything, I want to mention the differences between public schools and this voucher. Public schools, we're held accountable, all right? We have to give our students, have to take the STAR tests, E O C tests. We're held accountable. The private schools, no testing. Attendance, A D A. Public schools get punished if one of our students is absent. Voucher schools, no punishment. We embrace and we love our special needs students. It was mentioned that we have the highest number of special ed students in the area. We're proud of that fact. These schools, the majority of them, do not have to take special needs students, all right? There's two different amounts on these vouchers. One of them is 10,000, but if it is a special needs student, then that raises to 11,500. We work with and take care of any discipline problems we have in our schools. These private schools, they'll kick them out. I just believe this is completely unfair. We ask, what can we do? What we can do is fight. If you know somebody, if you know a senator, if you know a representative, contact them. What I've seen over the last three months compared to last year, there are a lot more people speaking up in favor, you know, pushing for public school funding. Last Thursday, in the Austin American Statement, there was an article on public school funding. Cesar Blanco, our senator, was the main character, main speaker in that article, and he went through everything I just mentioned to you. He's fighting. In the El Paso Times last Thursday, Vince Pettis did the exact same thing. We know, Dr. Delatorre and I have had this discussion, make it equal. Okay, give them their vouchers, give them their 10,000, whatever. Give us 8,000, all right? And then let's go to war. All right? Make them take these STAR and E O C exams, and we'll go to battle with them. All right? I just want it to be, we want it to be fair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now proceed with, we do not have a public hearing. We will move on the agenda review and discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of regular meeting of ISLDA I S D Board of Trustees for February 12, 2025, and related recommendation motions with the superintendent and executive cabinet, and receive responses to questions and our requests for additional information through the superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on said items on February 12, 2025, regular board meeting of trustees. Please stop me if you have any questions or you wish to pull an item. Consent item number one is Board of Trustees Workshop, regular board meeting, January 15, 2025, 6 p.m. Monthly Financial Statements and Bund Project Report for December 2024. Approve number three, approve a low attendance day waiver application for September 11, 2024, Hank's Middle School.
Mr. President, I'd like to pull item three, please.
Pull consent item number three. Okay. Consent item number four, approve a low attendance day waiver for January 8, 2025, district-wide. Consent item number five, approve a low attendance day waiver application for January 10, 2025, for several campuses. Number six, approval of amendment number one to Y S D contract number 20200143 with El Paso County Community College District for operation of J N Hank's Early College High School. Action items, number one, donation to Eastwood High School Girls Golf Program. Number two, the 25-26 district calendar. And number three, 2025 internal audit annual plan. The order of the agenda has been approved, and I have an electronic motion on the remaining consent agenda items listed on this. On this agenda is recommended by the administration. May I have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the remaining consent agenda items on this agenda as recommended by administration.
We have a motion by Mr. Hagerty. We have a second by Mr. Hernandez. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are in, seven in favor and opposed. Get it done.
We are now on poll consent agenda items, page three, number three.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to pull the consent agenda items, number three, as requested.
Do we have a discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I pulled number three, the waivers for September 11, 2024. I had earlier asked for the percentage of absences on that day. I'm starting to figure out the answer as I'm thinking about it, but let's go ahead and do it for the public record anyways. Our attendance was, so an average absence day is 6%. And the percent absent was actually less than that on September 11, 2024, at 4.69%. Could we talk about why we're asking for a waiver on this day when the percentage was actually better than an average day?
So in order to qualify for a waiver, we have to be 10% below our normal. So I'm not sure of the numbers, and I apologize because Ms. Moy is not here. She went home sick this evening. But this particular increase in attendance or decrease in attendance that day was due to a social media threat that was posted online, and students didn't come to school because parents were concerned. The threat was investigated. It was not credible, and so we can't help it. Once that's posted, students don't come. So we asked for a waiver because it's less than 10%. It's more than 10% below normal attendance.
I think the discrepancy is that we may have provided you with the district-wide attendance rate on that day that was 4 point something, but at Hank's Middle School, it may have been greater than 10%.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, and I was starting to figure that, but I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, so it's, we're only asking for the waiver at Hank's High School? Or Middle School, excuse me?
Hank's Middle School, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Okay, and, I mean, I'm assuming this helps us with A D A? Okay, and what about the, for those students that are on the brink of truancy, does this count against them on those truancy absences, or is that also waived for that as well?
Yes, when it comes to school safety, if it's a safety reasons that the parents didn't send them, those absences are considered excused on that day.
And the same would be for the other waivers that we're asking for, January 8 and January 10. Because, and I want to say this for the public, when we were having this weather crisis, some parents were saying, I'm being forced to take my student in bad weather. It's dangerous. I don't want them out there. But if I don't, and the district's saying, well, then don't bring them. But if I do that, then I'm going to get in trouble with truancy court. But now these absences, we're not going to count anywhere towards that, right?
And also remember, in order to qualify for L O C or truancy, it has to be a cumulative of 10%. So they have to have 18 absences throughout the whole year.
Okay, so if somebody was at 17 absences, and they missed also one of those waiver days, they're still at 17 absences.
Correct.
So we're not penalizing anybody for missing one of these weather days, especially now that we're approving these waivers.
That's correct.
I just wanted to say that for the benefit of the public, and thank you for answering my question.
For clarity, they still have to call it in?
Yes, they do have to report it. We follow our normal attendance procedures, and then the attendance clerk work with their principals. For example, at Hank's Middle School, they report them. Due to the attendance efforts that we also have going on in the district, we also obviously send out a call to parents, hey, your child didn't show up today, please send us the reason why. So we do that no matter weather, safety, no matter a normal school day. We always send out those calls that we get from the district. In addition, our attendance clerks and principals will follow up, especially if there is a pattern of high attendance.
Okay, so we need to vote on this consent item number three?
Yes, we need a motion.
We need a motion.
And your motion will be located in your notice, the review script that you just reviewed?
We have to make this manually, right?
No, sir. We just need somebody to...
Can I make a motion without doing it electronically? Oh, there it is. Great.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve a low attendance day waiver application for September 11, 2024, for Hank's Middle School.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We have a second by Ms. Woodrow. Please cast your electronic votes.
Trustees.
Votes are in, seven in favor and none opposed. We'll now go on to the consent items. Consent item number one, donation to Eastwood High School Girls Golf Program. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Booster clubs work so hard for their teams and groups for needed money. They work long hours donating their time and energy to make sure the student athletes have everything they need to be successful. Eastwood Golf Boosters have worked tirelessly to raise this donation for the Eastwood Girls Golf Team. On behalf of the district, I would like to thank the Eastwood Girls Golf Booster Club for this donation. I look forward to playing again in your next fundraising golf tournament. I would also like to thank all of the parents for their participation and involvement in the girls' golf program. Coach Truesdale, the head coach, does a fantastic job teaching and coaching his team. Thank you, Coach Trues... Thank you, Coach Truesdale, for your hard work and dedication. Thanks also to Coach Chavez, the assistant coach. The young ladies on the team are also hardworking and dedicated. I know this because I have seen them practicing at local golf tournaments, golf courses in the area. I am wishing the Eastwood Girls Golf Team the best of luck in their upcoming season. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Have a motion. I have a motion by Mr. Dwyer. We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your electronic votes.
I move to accept a donation to Eastwood High School to benefit the girls' golf program in the amount of seven thousand dollars.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Lucero. Votes are in, seven in favor, none opposed. Action item number two is twenty five twenty six district calendar. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I am a Y I S D parent who is in favor of a traditional calendar. But I will be voting to approve the intercession calendar because I respect the process that occurred. Last time I voted no because I felt that my learning community was strongly opposed to it. And I asked for a survey to be done, and that survey was done. Thank you, Dr. Chacon, and anybody else that was involved in making this happen. And overwhelmingly across the district, for parents that participated, they want the intercession calendar. But I did want to point out a couple of things, and I'm glad the data here supports what I personally experienced, and that's he slept at high school and he slept at middle school. We're one of the four campuses that actually favored a traditional calendar. So last year I was voting my district. I'm glad I have the data to support that. But I love advocating for the Aleta learning community. I can't help but feel we need a little bit more than everybody else, but I think this decision, we really need to think about the whole district as a whole. So I will be supporting it, but one thing I was thinking about, I think, is I'm curious what the response would have been if we were asked, if parents were asked, would you prefer to start on the last week of July or the first week of August? Honestly, I don't think it's a big deal either way. It's almost the same. But there is this perception from some parents that starting in July is crazy. It's just something that they don't prefer. I also explored how we can give everybody what they want with the two-week breaks in the fall, the winter, and the spring, and start in August instead of July. We have to move around a few dates. It's possible. I know the last day of school is harder to move because of graduations that we have to consider. I learned that. I appreciate learning that. But that was my solution so that kind of everybody gets what they want. I also asked for attendance on two days. I don't know if you noticed what days those were, but once the day after the Super Bowl and the other is the day after Easter. I remember I went to my daughter's award ceremony, and three students that were getting awards for perfect attendance were absent to receive their award the day after Easter. It's becoming notoriously known that across all industries, the Monday after the Super Bowl is missed by a lot. And the data I asked for shows that, in fact, that is true. The Monday after Super Bowl is well above average as Easter. As we, I think the planning for the next calendar starts now. I would like this to be considered because this affects our funding. This affects ADA. And I think a lot of parents and teachers, maybe not a majority, but certainly a significant number, would like the idea of not having to go to school the day after the Super Bowl or the day after Easter. I know some might look, oh, it's just football. We shouldn't prioritize that, but that's not the reality. It's a day that we spend with friends and family, and the activities can make it hard to wake up the next day, and the same is for Easter. I would just like this to be considered as we start planning. And possibly can we get the question, would you rather prefer the last week of July or the first week of August? But you did exactly what I asked, and I'm so appreciative of that. I thought it was a wonderful survey. But our participation was low. So this is not necessarily the majority of the people, but it's the majority of the people that participated. And if you are a Y I S D parent and you were not happy with the calendar, I want to know, did you, did you participate in this survey? If, and if you're not getting the text message, please reach out. We'll make sure that you are getting the proper messages so that you can properly participate and have your voice heard. But for this calendar, after thoroughly exploring it, I will be supporting it. Thank you for all your work on putting this together. I know it's not easy. I know it's not easy at all. So thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly appreciate Mr. Hernandez's comments and all the work and research that he did. I think he did a lot. I think that he had some good ideas. I know that my community isn't in favor of a calendar with intercessions. And I think my community is certainly well aware of and has asked me is, why do we continue to not recognize Juneteenth as a holiday? School's not in session on the nineteenth, so for the employees that do have to work on the nineteenth, how big of an impact would it actually be to allow our employees off on a federal holiday?
There is one implication. It's E O C retesting that week of June. So depending when that E O C testing, for example, in the calendar that you're approving, falls the sixteen through the eighteenth are the three recommendation testing. We'll do makeups on the nineteenth.
We can't do makeups on the twentieth?
The twentieth is a Saturday. It falls on a Friday.
Twenty third?
No, that's the window that the state gives us. I'll go back and check, Mr. Hagerty, and get back to you, but I'll check right now on my computer the TA window for E O C testing in the summer.
I don't know if you can do makeup the week before, but I don't know if we could start earlier.
Okay, let me look at the testing window. That usually falls on E O C retesters for the summer graduates.
Thank you.
So first of all, thank you to my colleagues to my left. Great ideas. I'd like to take Chris to my boss to advocate for Monday after the Super Bowl to give me the day off. So I'm going to bring you over. After looking at the calendar and speaking to several teachers, they were asking, we have our spring break. For example, this calendar is going to be the first two weeks of March. And the calendar that's coming up has the week, and then two weeks after that is our spring break. Many of our teachers who are absolutely hard workers and really want to get it in tune with the testing have asked if there's any way, or I'm asking this board and the experts, if we can continue the spring break, the immediate first two weeks of March, and then that way they have an extra week of testing to get ready for the test that's to come. And that's my reasoning, and there's several teachers that have asked that. I don't know what you all think about that or educators and experts.
So I can tell you the reason why we moved the week down is in alignment with Socorro I S D and El Paso. So El Paso I S D and Socorro I S D will have the week of the ninth, the March ninth, all the way through the twentieth as their break. That was one. Another reason is to balance out the nine weeks a little better. So if you look at the calendar, the third nine weeks has about seven and a half weeks of instruction versus the other ones who have the nine, the equal nine. There was another reason to give that extra week to balance out the nine weeks. From a testing point, you are correct. We start testing, again, looking at your calendar, April seventh. So April seventh is when we start testing. So they do have essentially two weeks to start reviewing as soon as they come back for testing. So there is pros and cons. The recommendation, of course, is up to the board. I'm happy to. Either way, it works for us.
How do you guys feel?
There is pros and cons to both.
I'm going to have an assumption and maybe a question. I'm doing a theory. Is this because we have teachers that, or employees that their students, that their kids go to E P I S D and Socorro I S D or?
Yes, also we align with E P C C and U T E P. So the week of, and U T E P and E P C C haven't published a calendar. They're always, they publish it a little later. They haven't published it. We usually, they usually do spring break the week of the ninth through the thirteenth, which does align us either way. If we start, if we move it up, it aligns. If we start it later, it aligns.
It's that, Dr. Chacon, I know the extensive amount of effort and work you put into the calendar each year, along with those that assist you through this lengthy process. I know once it comes here, there's been so much into it. I think that you, as an instructional professional, what Trustee Bustillos is saying, is there, do we have any idea if there is going to be an effect in our testing if we do it this way? Or is it's a risk either way? What is the lesser risk to make sure that our scores do stay up? Because that is one of our strategic goals.
I can't, I want to forecast the future, but I can't. This was the first year that the spring breaks are off this year right now. So I don't have data to tell you this was the impact or this wasn't the impact. To answer that question, Ms. Lucero, I apologize. I forecast the scores being great. That's what I'm manifesting regardless of a calendar, but that's just me praying, hoping.
Yeah, it'll work both ways. I mean, if we start week one and S I S D hasn't started, then you're going to have challenges with teachers and employees whose children are home alone in the neighboring districts. If we line up with the two districts, it will affect the effort to balance the first, or what ends up being the third nine-week period will go back to being closer to seven and a half weeks. But ultimately, what it comes down to, it comes down to what happens in the four corners of the classroom, when the teachers are there with the students, whether it happens a week later or a week earlier. Teaching is the highest form of volunteerism. Teachers get to decide on a daily basis how much effort they're going to put into it, regardless of whether it's seven and a half weeks or nine weeks. And we are fortunate that the vast majority of our teachers feel like they have a moral imperative to give their kids the very best every single day that they are there. So we discussed it. I understand the rationale. Ultimately, it's at the discretion of the board. We promise we will make it work, successfully work either way. It's entirely up to you. It's just sort of a one-week shift.
Can I just say one more thing? I always say one more thing than I say like ten more things.
That's fine, yeah.
But anyhow, considering that this year, as we've been saying, and we say it every meeting, because of Governor Abbott and the inefficiencies that are continuing to happen in Austin on that executive level part, if we can find ways to increase the morale for our employees as a whole, and if doing something like that will increase the morale, I don't have a problem with it. I would recommend it, but I don't, that's my opinion.
So I'm going to speak in favor of your plan where it comes to the seven and a half weeks of of instruction. That's the comment that I've been getting from the teachers that I've talked to in the high school area. It impacts them because they end up having less time to, to, well, not just prepare. You have children who are failing, or children who are behind, are not turning in work, and all of this stuff, and it just all piles, just all piles on. So for those teachers, the seven and a half weeks are really difficult. And that also speaks to what Dr. Delatorre was saying. I mean, they could just go, okay, well, they just all fail. But that's not what they do. That's not what they do. They make extra effort, and they try to make sure that that every child is getting what they need. And so that's why I feel like it's important to even those two areas out, those two nine-week periods out.
When it comes to deciding the calendar, I would like to caution against considering what the other districts are doing. That was a point that was made last year of why we were having an early start. And we said we want to be aligned with the other districts when what actually ended up happening was that S I S D and E P I S D both started a week later in August. So especially after seeing that, I really don't think we should be considering that. I think it's an advantage to make our calendar different. That could be the difference for a parent who is on the fence of where they want to send their child. And, you know, hearing something like Y I S D is giving the Monday off of Super Bowl or something like that. It could be, for a parent that's on the fence, where am I going to send my child? What school? What district do I want them to be in? And we talked earlier that we have 6,000 students that come from outside of the district. We're bringing them in because we're awesome. And I think our calendar can be better. It can make that difference. I think it's newsworthy if we were to do something like that. But I, but that goes with us setting the bar, setting the example. I'd rather the other districts follow us. I think we can do better. So I really don't care what the other districts are doing. I understand some of the reasoning, but it's not worth considering, especially when the other districts might not even do what we think they're going to do. Thank you.
I just want to address my two fellow trustees, Mr. Bustillos and Mr. Hernandez, in regards to the Super Bowl. I feel like instead of calling it Super Bowl Sunday, why don't we just change it to Super Bowl Saturday?
Is there any way, Mr. Safi, we can do just like a quick, you know?
Let me say something first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
All right. I've listened to my fellow board members. I've heard their their words as to why they want this or why they want that. I'm all for having more time off, but the thing is, the bottom line is that we still have to make up those hours somewhere. Is that correct?
So I think the important thing, not on the spring break, the spring break is.
No, no, I'm not talking about the spring break. I'm talking about Super Bowl Monday. I'm talking about starting later. Does that impact our Thanksgiving holiday and our Christmas and end of the year? Do they shorten up the time on that?
I'll let Ms. Russell answer from the contract, because remember, your teachers work 187 days.
That's what I was getting to.
Thank you, Mr. President. It does have the potential, but as we know, teachers work 200, I mean, most administrative staff work 226 days. Teachers work 187. They're paid for 188 because of the Fall and Spring Parent Teacher Conference. So if we modify a day, we just take that day away and add it somewhere else. So could it potentially be added to Thanksgiving or to Christmas break? Yes, absolutely. If we're talking about Juneteenth, that's a little. If we're talking about Juneteenth, that's a little different because it only is going to affect the 226-day employees. And with, in that regard, we can take it away from a non-duty day or something of that nature. So it wouldn't affect the campuses as much.
How about studying, starting the, like Mr. Hernandez said, a week later? And we cannot change the end date because that's our, that's when our graduations are happening.
So then, yes, it could technically take away from, from different times off that we already, that we have scheduled in the calendar. We would have to make up those days to ensure we have the proper number of hours in accordance with state guidelines.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now you can talk.
Thank you. Is there any way we can get a, just a quick vote to see if we move spring break?
With an amendment.
Well, but does everybody agree with it?
Well, we have to vote.
Well, I know, that's why I'm asking, can we vote on just that?
Yes, let's make a motion.
And then make the amendment?
No, no, we could make, make a motion now with the amendment to, make a motion with how you want it. No, make a motion with how you want it. Go ahead and make the motion. How you want it.
Okay.
Trustee Lucero, we have you as the mover?
I, I, I was trying to beat out the men. But I would like to make a motion to approve the calendar with the amendment of beginning, having spring break with the two weeks, the beginning of March.
Yes.
Safi, any help with the motion?
Your, your motion is to approve the calendar as presented, except?
To, with the, to approve the calendar as presented with the exception of adding, of making two weeks, moving?
Moving spring break up a week.
A week earlier?
Yes.
So that the spring break and the spring intercession would start?
The first week of March.
Would start the one week before they are currently depicted on the post calendar.
Correct.
So they start in the, in other words, they'll be off the first two weeks of March like they are this year. That's why we're asking.
This calendar.
So it'd be the dates March 2nd through the 13th? Yes?
How would that accomplish?
The teachers are, were asking why we are starting a week later when that's going to kind of go into their testing. So they could have a, a week, they can have that week and start preparing for the test rather than not have the spring, uh, spring break. I got you. So, thank you.
Is that a motion understood by everyone who needs to implement it? Understood?
Okay, we have a motion.
Can you amend a motion before it gets seconded? Or does it need to be seconded and voted on and then amended? General members?
Can we just not second?
You have a motion on the floor. To reach a vote, you need a second.
I guess my, my question would be, how do you second it? Or how do you amend it? Does it need to be seconded before you amend it? Or does, at what point do you amend it?
I would recommend having a second before an amendment. If there is no second, the motion dies, and then another motion can be made.
It, it sounds like you're recommending that we do not second this motion so that we can make a new motion with the, with the amendment.
Well, you would amend the motion. It would be a motion to amend.
To amend, right.
The motion is, it's on the floor.
Okay, so a motion?
A motion's already been made.
So then I second.
But now we can still amend the motion that was already made and then vote on that?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
First, well, but I'd recommend, see if you get a second to this motion first.
Yes.
If not, the motion dies, and then a new motion can be made.
There's a second?
The motion that's been recommended, you want it to be voted on first.
It sounds like it's now seconded.
Yes.
Okay, so now, a motion to amend the motion that's on the floor would be in order. And then you would vote first on the amendment, if it's seconded. And then you would vote on the motion as amended if the amendment passes. If the amendment does not pass, then you'd vote on the original motion.
That makes sense.
Do we have a second on the amendment?
Oh, we didn't even have an amendment yet.
Not on the amendment, right.
So then, I second.
No, you made the motion. I'll second it, Trustee Bustillos.
Okay, so.
He just gave it.
She made it.
She made the amendment.
Trustee Lucero did amend the motion?
No, she just made a motion.
She made the motion to move it to a week earlier from March 2nd to March 13th.
Right, but that wasn't amended. That was just her, her motion.
Yes, now you guys propose to amend.
Okay, so.
So the amendment that I was going to propose was to include June 19th as a, a holiday. And if there's a second on that, we would vote on that amendment on its own?
Correct.
And then as the new motion as a whole.
Mr. Haggerty, this, this year, June 19th is on a, a Friday, and typically we take Fridays off in the summer and do four tens. So it may not...
So then can we designate it a holiday anyway then? And then there we go?
Yeah, I mean, we could designate.
I think it, it shows that we really do care about our teachers, the fact that we are recognizing this date as the federal holiday that it is and give it its, its due importance.
We can certainly do that, sir. It's still under consideration by the federal government with the modifications that are being made with the diversity, equity, and inclusion situation. But we, as a district, you as a board, can certainly do that.
Cool. Then that is my amendment.
I'll second Trustee Haggerty's amendment.
Thank you.
So you have to vote on the amendment. So if the amendment passes, then we vote on, on your item with that amendment attached to it.
Can we have a reading of the full amended item that we're voting on, please?
So it would be move spring break, so the first two weeks of March, and include June 19th as a recognized Easter holiday.
Right.
So, just let me ask, just for my own, my own clarification. We still need to vote on the amendment first. And then, after we vote on the amendment, there will be another vote for the, for the, the actual motion.
With the amendment added.
Right. So this vote that we're about to take will be for the amendment.
Correct. So?
No, I think it would be a, a verbal vote.
So we still have Trustee Lucero as the mover, so she's going to have to read her motion?
You're going to have to say it.
No, because we haven't, we haven't approved the amendment yet. The amendment will have to be a verbal vote. Because it's not on the electronic thing.
So President, I have her, I have her down as electronic for Lucero, and then Bustillo seconded whatever the motion is.
But that's for the original motion.
But now he amended it, so now we're going to vote on the amendment.
Yes, we're voting on the amendment.
So. So. So there's a first. So do we vote here or do we vote in?
There's a motion for the amendment and a second for the amendment, so we need to vote on that.
So the, the issue before the board currently is whether to amend the original motion to add June 19th as a holiday.
And?
And?
Nope, that, that's it.
That's it.
Just that. And then if that passes, we can go to the next step.
Right.
Which will be the original motion?
Right, and this, this action will take, will have no effect. Even if it passes, if the motion is amended, does not pass. This is simply a motion to amend the main motion to include June 19th as a holiday.
The second, the second, never mind, let's vote that.
Let's vote.
Let's go.
I think I got it.
You seconded it already, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we still going?
Aye.
For the Juneteenth?
For Juneteenth, aye.
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 So now that the amendment has been accepted, and thank you, now we will vote on this.
Ms. Lucero?
And this one would include the 19th?
The first week. So you already did it? Right.
I thought I read, did I read it again?
You now vote on the motion as amended.
I voted, I approve the, no. I move the motion as amended.
It's already been moved.
I move to approve the original.
It's time for a vote.
Okay, vote it, yes.
So vote yes.
You already did. Second.
Second by Mr. Bustillos. Mr. Haggerty? What's your vote?
We were voting on this, because it's already amended.
Okay. You have to vote, yes.
You don't.
Results are in six in favor. We want a opposed.
Thank you all for participating in this. I appreciate it. Thank you. I don't think it was going to be that hard.
All right. Action item number three, 2025 Internal Audit Annual Plan. Is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, may I have a motion? I move to approve that 2025 Internal Audit Plan is presented by the internal auditor. We have a second by Mr. Chris Hernandez. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes given cast. Seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you. At this time, the Board of Trustees had determined that a closed meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for the state. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Sac, Texas Government Code Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections and purposes covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 82, 127, 821, 83, 84, 87, and 89. Should any final action, decision, or vote be required with regard to any matter considered in that closed session, the final action, decision, or vote shall be in the open meeting or at a subsequent public meeting with notice. The board will now go into closed session at the Rio Grande Room at 8:37 PM. Thank you.
I reconvene this meeting of the Board of Trustees with Shane Hagerty, Chris Hernandez, Charlie Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Katherine Lucero and myself, Cruz Ochoa at 9:41 PM. Action after closed session was to consider approval at district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. May I have a motion? Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, Mr. President. I move to consider intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC proceeding SOAH docket number 473-2511219. Application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and status for rate 41 group and other rate classes subject to at least 50% of prior rate 41 member participants.
Chris, we missed number one.
Did I miss what?
Number one.
Am I reading the wrong one?
Yeah.
Oh darn, that's the one I wanted to make a motion on. But I messed up, so I'm gonna have to read the other motion.
Well...
Okay, I apologize. Mr. President, I move to approve the district-wide intruder detection audit reporting findings as discussed in closed session.
Thank you. We have a second by Mr. Bustillos. Please cast your electronic votes. It's log night. Results are in. Seven approved, nine opposed. Okay, number two. Consider intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC proceeding SOAH docket number 473-2511219. Application of the El Paso Electric Company to change rates and status of rate 41 group and other rate classes subject to at least 50% of prior rate 41 member participants by percentage of usage also intervening and subject to approval at a future board meeting of a definite interlocal agreement and engagement with special counsel. May I have a motion? Mr. Hernandez.
All right, let's do it again. Mr. President, I move to consider intervention in Public Utility Commission of Texas PUC proceeding SOAH docket number 473-2511219. Application of El Paso Electric Company to change rates and status for rate 41 group and other rate classes subject to at least 50% of prior rate 41 member participants by percentage of usage also intervening and subject to approval at a future board meeting of a definitive interlocal agreement and engagement with special counsel as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. We have a second by Ms. Woodruff. Please cast all your votes. Results are in. Seven approve, nine opposed. May I have a motion to adjourn? Adjourn.